Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I gladly call the special city council meeting Tuesday, June 16th to order and ask that all attendants please rise for our invitation of our political leaders. I ask that Councilman Wilson, if you feel comfortable with our invitation, we appreciate it.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, as again let you allow us to assemble here in this hall. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be able to get here today. We thank you for all you've done for us. We ask that you come in now as we begin to attend to the business of this city of Hartsfield. We ask you, Lord, to touch each member here on this council. Each member who is here tonight, I fear, is to see what's going on in this city. We pray, Lord, for all mankind, wherever they may be, and ask that you continue to pass this country. We give you all the honor and praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. Okay. Moving into old business, item three on the agenda. First order of business is the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4198. The manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt a budget for the city of Hartsfield, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance 4198. This time the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4198, if you'd rise, come to the front, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing in all, in favor of the public hearing and entertaining any motions on the floor for ordinance 4198. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4198.
Say.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask if there is a project that comes up actively past this budget, how do we go about funding that, allocating that?
Without stepping completely in the deep water, we have contingency funds. They're not necessarily allowed and allocated. They're in the general fund, but they're more for emergencies that should come up than they are for projects. And we do have a budget, we do have a budget of matching funds, grants and such that could be allocated. I don't, so without knowing the full extent of your question, that's the best I can do.
To have an event in, in, um, South Hartsfield.
We would have hospitality funds again open in the fall. We do that twice a year, so you could apply in the fall for hospitality funds, or it actually has to be a nonprofit that they would apply in the fall.
Okay, anything further? Hearing in all, in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. Ordinance 4198 is passed. Item four on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4199. The manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the 2014-2015 fiscal year general fund budget.
You've heard the reading of ordinance 4199. This time the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4199, if you'd rise, come to the front, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing that there are no comments, chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions on the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4199.
Say.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 4199? Hearing in all, yes, sir.
It doesn't look good coming up in a Ferrari fire truck, anyway.
The runner-up in the state of South Carolina, Spellingbee, would know that that was a Fiera.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, sir. But it drives like a Ferrari.
Thank you, sir.
So if no one wants to second that motion to add a second truck to the budget, anything further in the discussion? Hearing in all, in favor of ordinance 4199, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. The ordinance passes. Chief, if you'd see to it that we can prepare a nice fire helmet for Councilman Braddock for his generous support this year.
Yes.
All right, item five on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4201. The manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Hartsfield City Code, Chapter 31, Environment, Article 1, Smoking in Public Places of Employment, Section 31. It has two definitions, and this is to add the electronic cigarettes to our current smoking ban.
Okay, you've heard the reading and title of the presentation by the city manager. This time the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4201, if you'd rise, come to the front, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Yes, sir, please. If you'd state your name and address.
My name is Bill Collins. My address is 115 Arlington Avenue. That's my business address here in Hartsfield.
Yes, sir.
It's called Baking Masters. It's a vape shop. We do sell these type of products.
Yes, sir.
My main concern is, is on, and I think I read it, and I think I'm okay on this, but my customers come in and try the various flavors. I want to make sure that I'm gonna be okay with that, that I'm not gonna be breaking the city law.
Okay.
And I, and I think I read correctly that I am okay. I'm listed as a tobacco.
Right, you're exempt because you're.
But I wanted to make, I wanted to come before you and hear from you, so.
Wanted to get them ready.
That's, that's right.
That's part of it.
I enjoy doing business everywhere in Hartsfield. People have been great to me.
Yes, sir.
I look forward to continuing that relationship.
Yes, sir. So you do fall under the exemption because you are considered to be a cigar tobacco shop. That's correct. Everybody agrees? Counselor?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Are there any other comments? Hearing in all, chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions on the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4201.
Say.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 4201?
Oh, there's testing when he's talking about be doing his business, all right.
And that's in, in the business. What about sidewalk?
Within 10 feet of a doorway, you cannot just stop and smoke, but if you're walking by, you can smoke, just not stopping.
Okay, any further questions? Or comments, a little more discussion? Hearing in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Opinion of the chair, ordinance 4201 is passed. Item six on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4202. The manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt and approve the fee schedule for the city's splash pad in Hartsfield. As I mentioned last time, there was no fee increase this year. We just had the title on it last year saying 2014 fees. We want to make sure this is, the fee's moving forward until we come back to council to ask for a fee increase to do this.
Okay. This time the chair will open the public hearing on ordinance 4202. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4202, if you'd rise, come to the front, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Okay, hearing in all, chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and we pass ordinance 4202.
Say.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just for, for record, I did wish everybody would get, take an opportunity to go out there. It is just about to blow up out there on, with the interest and participation. Sometimes I help Mr. Gardner at the sports center for the dates for the private parties and stuff. They don't have maybe a handful left available for the whole summer.
Yeah.
And it's just been all positive feedback that I've got as far as splash, splash pad, and they've done a great job.
Any further comments? So just for the benefit of staff, I still am, I think we've got to figure out a better way to, instead of arbitrarily setting the resident fees versus the county fees, there's gotta be a better formula than just figuring, you know, 20% higher, a dollar more. I'm not sure how we come up with that, and I'm not sure that looking at another city is gonna be the answer either. I ran into the exact same thing down in Charleston at their, their facility, which I thought was fabulous, but it's county residents, it's a county, it's a federal park, but it's a, in the county, and county residents were, you know, $15 and out-of-county residents were $16. And just, you know, it, it makes no sense to me because it's not, it's not giving a substantial enough break to the taxpayers that are living in the city and supporting. I realize where the money comes from and that it is coming from a lot of different places, but I still feel like we don't find enough opportunities to give back to the people that have built Hartsfield with their tax dollars. So I'd be interested if we could find a better, uh, sociological way to study that. I know that's asking a lot, but just, just on the, on the tickle list, so.
And Mayor, I'm in agreement with you on that. I, I don't know that this would be the answer, but I would, that, like, we do the, um, the water, the water bill, don't, we do half?
It's double, and that's what, is that not what we have, maybe? Really not double, what, instantly? We're not double?
So like for the season pass, it's 40, 60?
The reason, I mean, if you make it too much higher, so we were thinking on the child ticket, $4, they have to come at least 10 times to buy that season pass to make it even, break even. So how many times are the, are they gonna come during the summer?
Right.
At some point, they're not gonna buy a season pass.
I'm not suggesting to price ourselves out of the market as far as on the backs of the county. What I'm, I guess I'm asking is how do we reduce the cost for our city citizens? I'm just trying to find a way to give back to those folks and not penalize anyone further. So I'm not suggesting we double the county rate or triple the county rate, but how do we give back to the people that are already?
Well, to get a season pass, you have to show up and get your picture taken, and so it seems like to me that that would be the place that you could give city residents.
Oh, no, right, yeah, establishing residency is not a problem because you come in and both can get.
Season passes, but what I'm saying is, you know, as you're, you're walking through the gate for one time.
Oh, no, yeah, this would be a season pass. Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't ask people to validate the water bill in the spot. Yeah, so anyway, just food for.
So did you have to show a license in Charleston to show that you were out of county? How did they determine you had to pay more?
Um, we just, I guess it's, uh, yeah. I said, but of course I live in the county. You don't recognize me and Joe Riley Jr. Um, no, so I mean, we just, you know, it's a dollar, so I guess at that point, what do you lose? Some people may do that, but.
So really, you're more, you're towards the season pass. That's where my brain was kinda going.
Well, I can't, I don't see how it's feasible to, you know, in a perfect world, it'd be great if we had, hey, we're city resident cards, and we could go to the grocery store and like get a discount and be taxes and, you know, everything else, but I'm not sure that that's feasible at this point. And maybe the splash pad isn't the greatest, you know, example, but.
And I guess my take on that, just because the splash pad was built with very different revenue sources than your typical general fund, it was built mostly with hospitality dollars that are participated by everyone who eats in Hartsfield and not just Hartsfield residents. So it's a little bit of a, it's a little odd.
So for me, I look at it as card divorce. If we didn't have taxpayers that built a fabulous city, we wouldn't have the opportunity for the splash pads or the hospitality taxes. So I agree with you. I mean, I'd just love to explore, you know, we gotta find better ways to support the people that support us, so. Enough of that. If there is any further discussion, all in favor of, I have closed the public hearing.
4202.
4202, yeah, we're in discussion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Ordinance 4202 passes. Item seven on the agenda. It's public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4203. The manager will publish the ordinance.
An ordinance amending the 2014-2015 fiscal year infrastructure fund budget.
Okay, you've heard the reading and present of the title and presentation by the city manager. This time the chair will move to open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4203, if you'd rise, state your name and address for the record. Please come to the front and limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions on the floor for ordinance 4203. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4203. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask a question about, um, the expenses, the signage expenses getting ready to succeed the court, the court owns. Is that included in this, or could it be included in that?
These funds are already allocated, completely allocated. You'll see in my report, I gave to Johnny earlier, but he's handing out the executive session. One of the goals for this year was weight finding signage, so that's a significant expense that we'll come back to council with, asking for funding, but it's not included in this right now.
Okay.
But it's definitely on the radar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further? All right. Hearing in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Ordinance 4203 passes. Item nine on the agenda, resolution 6-15-05, resolution to approve and distribute state local accommodations tax revenue. You have in your packet the resolution. Chair, entertain any motions on the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass, no resolution. Note 61505. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I note that on the Butler Heritage Foundation, their request was 4,000, and they've been allocated 4,000. I wanted to know if, at all possible, we could get 1,000 from the tourism office.
Out of their allocation?
Tourism, uh, tourism office being funded with 11,000, and I was wondering if we could get 1,000 for Butler Heritage Foundation.
The chairman would have to make that in the form of a motion.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, we transfer?
Reallocate, transfer.
Reallocate, reallocate $1,000 from the Hartsfield Tourism Office to the Butler Heritage Foundation.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend resolution 61505 to allocate $1,000 coming from the budget line item of the Hartsfield Tourism Office to the Butler Heritage Foundation. There's a second as well. We're now in discussion.
I do want to point out, this is the newly created Hartsfield Tourism Office that will open, um, if you pass a budget this evening, so this is a new position the city has created that's being funded with this money. Um, I think, maybe I'm wrong, Trish, that you had wanted to move that from hospitality money, not from accommodations. Right now, we're on accommodations, just for previous discussion.
Yeah, um, right now, it's at.
So what she's alluding to is they're in part restricted funds.
Right, I understand that, of course. So they're at $30,211 and 28 cents. Where, where do you put on the accommodations, accommodations cap?
Right.
So is that where we have to be on that?
It's actually gonna be more than that to fund that department enough.
Okay.
In the past, it's, you know, we need these funds to actually make the budget around.
So in light of your, um, discovery of that item, I mean, you're still, you're welcome to make a motion to take it from anywhere, as long as there's support, but one word of caution that it would, these funds would have to meet the requirement for expenditure, and as long as they did that, it'd be fine. So did the madam wish to withdraw her motion? Or?
Well, I think here, this, this is money that are fumbled through that state accommodations tax committee. We have a, a committee that's been appointed, and it has to follow state gap ons, and since the, um, Butler Heritage Foundation only asked for 4,000 dollars, I guess we would need to know what the additional $1,000 would be spent on, because they only requested 4,000 and told us what the 4,000 would be spent on. We would need to know the, the background, and says what the additional 1,000 would be used for in order for it to fall under the state accommodations. We have to report any expenditures under this to the state.
That sounds good, you have qualified. Okay, the motion is withdrawn. Any further discussion?
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Hartsfield Arts Council and BICA, Renovest, Black Creek Arts, which all is, uh, isn't that just about the same thing?
So, um, the Hartsfield Arts Council is umbrella of Black Creek?
Black Creek up there, BCA C.
Right, but I think it's.
Renovest is now under Black Creek Arts.
Right.
It's a separate event under Black Creek Arts.
But the Hartsfield Arts Council is the governing body of Black, I mean, of, um, it's a sub-board of Black Creek that oversees Renovest, or no?
Renovest is sponsored by Black Creek Arts Council, which is technically known as Hartsfield Arts Council, but then they, they changed the name to Black Creek Arts Council, and they are functioning down, down here, I'm, I'm not their spokesperson, but, but Black Creek Arts, um, is dedicated to fostering arts and art activities, uh, theater, music, plays.
I think he was trying to determine, is there a difference between Black Creek and Hartsfield Arts?
Hartsfield Arts, they're one and the same. Hartsfield Arts Council is their legal name, but they operate under the name of Black Creek Arts.
See, I thought it was the one they created to oversee when they took Renovest.
No, that's just their legal name, and they're registered under the same.
All right, so that's what's your question, Councilor?
Well, why, why would you have them run here twice then?
The first request, I want to get, it's a little complicated. The first request they had is specifically for funding Renovest, but typically we would have funded that as its own individual under the HCDA, I think in the past. When HCDA dissolved, Black Creek Arts took over, I guess, the charitable side of Renovest to handle all the funds, because they have their own 501(c)(30). So the first request is for, strictly for Renovest. The second request is for Black Creek Arts Council itself and all the events and programming that it does on its own that's completely distinctly separate from Renovest. And those things are like gallery openings and artists that they have come in and things of that nature at Black Creek Arts.
I guess in the past, this would have been, the first one would have been the HCDA on Renovest.
Yeah, because, you know, to me, I'd always love to see, see Renovest up there and see Black Creek up there twice.
I think the reason we have to do that is the money has to check, actually has to be written to Black Creek, because there's a legal entity that receives the funds, and then they actually fund Renovest under Black Creek, under their tax ID number. So that's why Black Creek Arts Council is mentioned, because Renovest is not an entity in and of itself at this point.
Because we don't have the full applications in our packets, could you elaborate a little bit on the Coker College requests?
Um, and it just passed out, or, Trish, it just passed out, I gave, I did a summary today of all the different requests that were received. And Coker specifically was asking for funding for, um, additional promotions and advertisements of the events that they hold on their campus, and they gave a, a large list of their calendar for 15, 16. You'll see, this is their application, it takes three and a half pages for their entire calendar, and it's events such as athletic events, um, and concerts and things of the like, and they really don't do a lot when it comes to promoting those events, but yet they bring in a bunch of tourists into the city of Hartsfield. And so they were requesting funds to promote those and to promote Hartsfield along with it as far as places to stay and things to do while people are here enjoying their events that they're already hosting. And I think the total was over 100 events and over 40,000 in attendance, if you count all the events together. So I imagine many of those are tourists when you consider parents and other families coming in to go to these events. And I will say, all this has run through the committee, the committee sat through over two hours with the presentations and even had to convene another day to have their deliberations because we have so many applicants.
So I'm just trying to figure out a way to, um, help partially fund the city's needs for marketing and branding.
I, I, we talked about the, the request that we had. I actually don't think that that qualifies for accommodations tax. We've had some internal discussions about that. I think the actual branding itself, when we're trying to create a brand, I think that's something that we're gonna have to figure out how to fund internally, but once we get to the point of actually purchasing the marketing materials, then I think we could go back to accommodations tax for funding that piece of it, to the branding. The development is really something the city needs to take on as our own project, and if that's something we decide that we want to move forward with, then we would try to find the funds internally to, to pay for that out of our general fund.
That's where I asked the question about the, um, gateway signage and weight finding signage.
The branding is the first part of that, and I think we've had some meetings, and then maybe today on that. And so, I mean, I'm committed, if that's something that we decide that we want to do and move forward with, then we will find the funds internally with, through the general fund to pay for that. But once we get to the point of actually doing the signage, then I think we could look to accommodations and hospitality tax to help fund the actual creation. And that would be, I mean, close, we have today cities of similar size that have done this recently, and you're looking 100, $150,000 for gateway signage plus all directional signage, so it would be significantly make sense to bring that.
And that's what I asked if, if, about the, um, multi-county business park funds.
And there may be future funds for multi-county business park, just that particular bond that we received, that, that money has been spent or allocated to College Avenue and all the, the work that's being done in that regard.
Okay. Any further discussion on the state local accommodations tax? Thank you, you may stay. Hearing in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Resolution 61505 has passed. Item nine on the agenda, resolution 61506, approval of distribution of hospitality tax Is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass resolution 61506.
Say.
Okay, is there any discussion on the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend, amend and make the motion that the Butler Heritage Foundation received $500 that has been allocated to New Vision. From what I'm reading, that is for their annual rice festival help in the Antioch community. That's, and it says on the north side of Hartsfield, but that's actually going towards society hill.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend resolution 61506 to remove.
I want to do another one, too.
To remove $500 recommend, recommended, recommended funds from the New Vision Community Development line item to the Butler Heritage Foundation. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. The, the amendment to resolution 61506 is carried. Madam?
Yes, I also wanted to amend and ask if we could, the Butler Heritage Foundation could, uh, ask for $500 for the Black Creek Arts, Renovest seeks to 500.
Okay, there's a, a motion on the floor to amend resolution 61506 to reduce the line item for Black Creek Arts Council, Renovest, by $500 and add it to Butler Heritage Foundation's funding. Is there a second? Does everyone clearly understand the motion? The remove 500 from Renovest and replace with Butler Heritage Foundation. Is there a second on the floor?
A second.
There's a second? All right, any discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
Resolution, I mean, the amendment to the resolution fails. Are there any further amendments to the resolution? All right, if there are no, um.
Let me ask a question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what does the city, um, receive from any thing like that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
On the South Carolina African Heritage Foundation to promote theater production, send theater to Black, Mr. Monk, what does the city receive in return as far as revenue or anything like that?
I don't feel that I'm qualified to answer that, that, we, we've never measured the impact.
I attended this year, many people stayed, the performers stayed in hotels, and they actually gave a free performance to the school district as well. But that, I don't know the economic impact of that, but I know that it was a thousand.
That's economic impact.
I don't know financially, whatever they.
Yeah, so it may not be financially, but, um.
But it is, it's big.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I was thinking, there's more, there's more, um, education goodwill and
Right.
community return. Right, and there's, yeah, okay. Any further amendments? Hearing on all in favor of resolution six fifteen oh six as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Resolution carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, item nine A, and at our seats, we have resolution oh six fifteen oh eight. Insert it there.
There's a, there is a motion to amend, um, item nine A on the agenda. Resolution six fifteen oh eight, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. There's one opposed, excuse me. So the amendment is, the amendment is agenda. Mr. Fail, if you let the, let the record reflect that Johnny made the first controversial amendment to the agenda since the governor's son. We didn't have any reporters from here. Just by the skin of your teeth. All right, um, so resolution six fifteen oh eight, uh, has been amended. It is a resolution to appro, for approval to apply for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen C O P S, commonly known as the COPs hiring program. Is there, um, is there a motion on the floor for resolution six fifteen oh eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the resolution? Hearing on all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, opposed by nay, resolution carries, oh, there's.
I should have asked in, in discussion.
Madam, will let me record your vote, please.
I'm kind of looking at, because I'm looking at the spam, he's, um.
It's about what president was tasked for.
Okay, so, but you're voting, you're voting no?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Madam Parker, if you'll just record that, you have one dissenting vote, um, the resolution does carry. Item ten on our, our agenda is a motion to inter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act thirty dash four dash seventy, paragraph face up, paragraph one and two, for the receipt of legal advice to discuss legal updates on outstanding legal issues, including lawsuits, discussions of negotiations, incident proposed contractual negotiations, discussion of city attorney contract and appointments to city boards, committees, and commissions, is there such a motion?
Certainly.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening, we will reconvene after the second session.